Hello and welcome to the August eighth, twenty twenty four. It's already August. Um, Town of Sherwin Select Board Meeting. Um, we're going to um just open here, go immediately to executive session. And at seven thirty, we'll go into um a regular open session. So I'd like to please ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please um read the executive session agenda, please.
Good evening. Item number one is meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one A three. And Suffolk Construction versus D Camp four forty nine Mass, four forty four, parentheses, two thousand and seven. To discuss thirty one Hunting Lane, forty one North Main Street, Igor Lebowski Hotel versus the Town of Sherwin. Leon Court number twenty one miscellaneous P S zero 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 one nine three parentheses H P S. And thirty one Hunting Lane LLC versus the Sherwin Board of Appeals Housing Appeals Committee. Number two thousand twenty one dash oh six and pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one A seven. To comply with or act under the authority of any general or privileged communication from town. Oh, I'm sorry. Any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements? Specifically this public records law, General Law, Chapter four, Section seven twenty six. To discuss privileged communications from town council versus litigation. Item number two is meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight. Section twenty one A three and Suffolk Construction versus D Camp four forty nine Mass. Four forty four parentheses, two thousand and seven. To discuss Phoenix Partners Greenwood Street Development LLC versus the Sherwin Zoning Board of Appeals. Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee twenty twenty four dash oh three. And Phoenix Partners Farm Road Development LLC versus the Sherwin Zoning Board of Appeals of Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty four dash oh six. And pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one A seven. To comply with or act on the authority of any general or special or federal grant in aid requirements. Specifically the public records law, General Law, Chapter four, Section seven twenty six. To discuss privileged communications from the town council regarding litigation.
All right, very good. Do I have any um motions or anything? Well, I'll make the motion. But do I have any um changes to the agenda? Okay. Seeing none.
I move uh you make the motion and I will.
Um, so as Chair, I moved that exec session is warranted for the previously named items. So I have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Um, Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, please stop the recording. All right, so it is seven thirty one on August eighth, twenty twenty four. This is now the open session session of the uh of the select board's meeting. We have just already had a executive session and um yeah, just moving on to open session now. I'm gonna ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session portion of the agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I've had no request for public comment tonight. Items can be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty eight hours in advance may be added. Item number one is Coolidge Street Apartments, one oh eight Coolidge Street, consideration of asking for a thirty or sixty day extension on comments. Item number two is the consideration of approval of the September third, twenty twenty four state primary election warrant. Jackie Morris will be here for that. Item number three is the consideration of yearly approval of the election workers. Item number four is consideration of award of a general obligation bond. Pam Douse, the treasurer collector will be here. Item number five is the consideration of acceptance of grants from the Mass Association of Council on Aging. Christine Nicole Lunt, our COA director will be here to speak on that. Item number six is the consideration of accepting a donation from Wegmans, the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for our annual town cookout. Item number seven is consideration of appointments. They're all building inspections. Chris Candy, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer, to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. Nathan Maltsinsky, Assistant Building Inspector, to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. John McGordy, Wiring Inspector, to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. Walter Nowicki, Assistant Wiring Inspector, to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. And Jack Rose is the Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty seven. Item number eight is the consent agenda, which is the payroll award in draft minutes of June thirteenth and July eleventh. And select board reports. Um, I've had a request to the select board to consider amending the agenda. If we could possibly take item number four, the consideration of award of a general bond. It's Pam Douse's birthday today and her family would love to take her out to dinner and she'd like to know if we could take her right after item number one.
Good. Do I have emotions relative to that? You moved uh with with the proposed modification as well, I'm assuming.
Yeah, move approval of the agenda with moving item four to be as soon as possible.
Oh, yeah. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Um, Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
Yeah, I might as well. Very good. Okay, we'll move right on. Agenda item one. Cool Street Apartments, one oh eight Coolidge Street, consideration of asking for a thirty or sixty day extension on comments. Uh, Stephen?
Um, yeah, so essentially just kind of reporting that um as per usual with most of our forty B um projects. We requested a thirty day extension from the um from the state for the comments. And the I will say that the response that we got is somewhat ambiguous. Um, but uh the site visit has not been scheduled yet. But um despite that, we are going to ask all of the um regulatory boards and the other relevant boards and committees. Um, to try to get comments back to us regarding the one zero eight Coolidge Street project um as soon as possible. Um, and as Jeremy is not here tonight, I'm gonna ask the Assistant Town Administrator if you would be able to send a memo out to all of the relevant boards and committees to to ask for their comments. Um, we realize that a lot of uh the boards and committees may not have a regularly scheduled uh meeting uh within the next week or so. And so if necessary, we are probably gonna ask you to call a special meeting next week. Um, to be able to discuss and get comments back to the select board as soon as you can.
Which is unfortunate, given that the summertime, but we're just in a situation where this simply is what it is. Um, are there any comments from the board here? All right. Um, so there's no action needed from us, right? It's just simply um directing uh Diane and our Jeremy to.
Yeah, because we've already requested the extension and we're essentially kind of waiting for more specifics from the state. But in the meantime, I think it's uh prudent for us to make sure that all of our our various um boards and committees uh get the get the gears going.
And even at best case, it may be a thirty day extension if we get anything, which case frankly, it'll still be a rush. You know, they'll probably still have to do a special meetings, to be honest with you about there. All right. Uh, very good. I agree with that. If there's no other discussion on that item or any other comments, I'll move on to item number four, consideration of award, general obligation bond. Uh, Pam Douse, the birthday person.
Thank you. It's my birthday and my first bond. Woo hoo. Um, so Bond Council made it easy. They um, I think Jeff, you have it to read the vote.
Um, Eric has it.
Okay, and it's um a four million fifty five thousand general obligation bond. Um, that will be dated August twenty third for all of our capital purchases. Um, and some older ones that um we voted at town meeting to actually fund this time. So I just need it voted on as it's worded and um need signatures from all of you guys. Um, I did send an email telling you when I was available. Um. I'm working tomorrow. Town Hall's open till noon. I'm around all weekend too. So if I need to come to you, I'll be happy to come to you. And I'm also working Monday two, eight to five.
And um now just to clarify the procedure here, it's read by the clerk, correct?
It what? Say it again.
This this to read, we have to read this out loud, vote of the bond has to be read into the record. You can't just refer it. Okay.
Well, that's up to you guys. I don't know. As I guess if it's just put into the minutes, this whole piece of paper, I don't know why I can't say.
Okay. Okay, okay. I mean, my preference would be not to read it, especially these lines. I know why I thought that. I know why I thought it had to be read. It's a big referred to. It's long. It's a lot of work.
Yep.
It has lines going on to twenty four.
Yes.
You know? So you just need a motion to vote. That's it. For some reason, I thought it had to be read. Uh, but if just need a motion to vote, then hey, uh, do I have any motions relative to um this item? Paul and Paul, you're muted, by the way. Actually, and I apologize. I muted you because he had a bunch of uh music coming out. Okay.
Uh, I had a question. Um, yep. The borrowing for departmental equipment. I thought it says it was seventy thousand, but we've spent a hundred and nine thousand. If it's only seventy thousand, how did we spend a hundred and nine thousand?
I think that was the highway truck and we had already spent a portion of it. And so now we're just borrowing the rest of the seventy thousand. We had already borrowed some, so we're just borrowing the remainder.
Okay, so are we borrowing seven? We're borrowing seventy thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have the the Bond Council motion. So I want to make the motion to adopt the motion as presented by the treasurer and Bond Council, but I don't have it to read it. You don't need to read it, so I'm gonna incorporate.
No, it's not. It didn't. It's not in the packet because it didn't come in until late today after the packets went out.
I have it. I have it. I got an email, but you have it too, right, Eric? It's just long lengthy.
Yeah.
I have it. It's in the packet that I printed for me. And I have it via email.
So you don't have to read the whole thing. I'm trying to say in the motion to adopt it as presented by the treasurer. As prepared by Bond Council. Ah, there it is.
All right, when did this go out?
Pam sent this out today, I believe. Yep.
Yeah, I got it at ten AM today.
Earlier today as well. Yep, so it sounds like you mostly got it. Let me check the email. Hold on. I think we've all seen that.
Oh, that's slow.
Um, the email was sent at ten AM and it looks like it has. Okay. Yeah, so it has Paul on it. So I mean, it's somewhere in your inbox. So at least it did go out to each of us today. What's happening?
Thanks.
Okay. I think that seems sufficient to move forward with this. Um, so does anyone have a motion or anything, any other questions relative to this?
I I made a motion.
Okay, okay. Sorry, sorry about that. I have a second.
Second.
All right. For discussion, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Thank you very much, Pam, and have fun tonight.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And just either text me, call me, stop by Friday or Monday, or I can come to your house or whatever this weekend, just to get you all to sign everything.
Yeah, I'll come into Town Hall on Monday during during the hours that you'll be there.
Wait, this this just needs Jeff's vote? Does it need all of our votes? I mean, as signatures?
It needs everybody's.
Because on the on the form that's sent out, it just had Jeff's signature on it.
That one's just Jeff's, but I got a bunch of others.
Okay.
Needs the select board every number.
Maybe it's just one of those things that the clerk signs. I know it's a couple of things like, okay, we each needed to come in. All right.
Yep.
Oh, Pam, what are your hours tomorrow?
Tomorrow I'm there. Well, Town Hall's open eight to noon. I'll probably be there a little bit longer.
Okay, I'll come Monday.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
See ya. Okay, moving on. Uh, go back to the um original number two, uh, consideration of approval of September third, twenty twenty four state primary election warrant. Uh, is Jackie on here? Or someone to speak to it?
I move approval.
Hi, it's Chaney. Jackie is on the Cape. Um, she just said everything's the same as past years and she was just having trouble joining the meeting.
All right, no problem. Sounds like Paul moved moved approval anyway. Do I have a second?
Second.
And um the more it's the election workers, it's at our office. So if anybody wants to come in tomorrow and sign it, um, otherwise she'll be back in the office on Monday.
Okay. There's a lot of things assigned. Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good. Okay, um, consideration of yearly approval of election workers. Also Jackie, but the list is background material.
So can I move approval of the list of names presented by the town clerk?
Absolutely.
She's certified that the two town committees have not presented any names. The statute requires to give deference to the two political parties. None of them have presented any names.
So the parties are listed in the form, mostly U's and D's and one R. Is that what you mean? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, who who um all in favor? Uh, Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I might as well. Did we get a second on Paul's motion? Maybe someone could obligatorily second.
I seconded it.
Okay, okay.
I had Jeff did. That's who I had seconded, Jeff. Yeah.
Okay, okay. As far as committed, very good. Moving along here. Um, consideration of acceptance of grants from the Mass Association of the Council of Aging.
Christina, the last is here tonight.
I see it right there.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Christina.
Hi. So uh, we did recently receive two grants from the MCOA. The first grant is for seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to be used to enhance public awareness of the COA. The second grant is for sixty three hundred to be used for development and implementation of outreach programs. Um, and I just asked that you accept to accept these grants from the MCOA.
All right, Paul, do you have a motion?
Yes, move to accept a grant in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the Massachusetts Council on Aging to be used to enhance public awareness of our council on aging and move to accept a grant in the amount of six thousand three hundred dollars from the Massachusetts Council on Aging to be used for development and implementation of outreach programs.
Second. Very good. Uh, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Um, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Now I might as well. All right, moving along. Consideration.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Very good. Absolutely. Um, consideration of accepting a donation from Wegmans, an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for annual.
Yep, this one's for me. I just applied for a grant on a win and they sent me an email that they gave us two hundred and fifty dollars to use towards our cookout.
Good work.
Mary wants us to buy Sterling tips with them.
Can you can you convince them to um open a new Wegmans near us?
Yeah, no kidding.
They tried that, but it works.
The Natick Mall one is sad. It is sad. It was nice in there too, but it was um.
Yeah, that was my that was my regular grocery store.
Are they closing Chestnut Hill two? Does any I heard that. Is that true?
I don't know. I didn't hear anything about that.
Maybe the rumor. Hope not.
The one in West, but it's thriving.
Paul has the motion here. Of course, yeah, yeah, I can acknowledge it. Um, okay, go ahead, Paul, with the motion.
Don't stand in the way of Paul accepting money.
Right. Let's get it in the bank before we start celebrating. Move to accept the donation from Wegmans in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Good.
To be expended for our third annual town hall cookout.
Good. Second, keeps me keeps me having to bring something. Okay, motion of second. All in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. I was always way send a little thank you email or something like that. This'd be nice as well. I'm sure it's all right. Okay, we're going to number seven, consideration of appointments. Um, it's basically the building inspectors, the five names as um previously read by uh Assistant Town Administrator.
And Chris Candy is here tonight, too.
Oh. There he is. That's Chris.
Glad to see you.
Chris himself. Chris, I'm glad.
I'm glad I'm coming back. I don't think there's anything controversial about this thing, but I'm just glad to see everybody, so.
Yeah, and I'll say welcome back, Chris. It's nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to make the five appointments in accordance with the list presented by the Assistant Town Administrator?
As listed in the agenda. Sure.
That's listed in the agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
Very good. Uh, all in favor? Um, Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Right.
Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
Very good. And thank you, Chris, and um got a good team there. Thanks again. Thanks again for coming back.
Eric said I as well, Diane.
I have it all down.
It's gone too smooth. We should have started as a seven fifteen. Um, all right, consent agenda. Uh, any motions relative to the consent agenda?
So I move approval with a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So there were some changes to the draft minutes. Did they get made? Diane?
Diane is muted. I got them, so I think.
Yeah, I think Diane slipped out.
They changed the re-sent it.
Okay, great. So move to approve the draft, move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, on favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Now I might as well. Any select board reports?
Oh, yeah, I have a report. Um, it at our water sewer district legislation has been before the legislature. And we were on pins and needles Wednesday, the last day of the session, uh, to hoping that it would pass. Of course, they never got to it. Uh, I guess that's typical. So uh, it's not passed this session, but we're we understand that the legislature will continue to hold informal sessions over the next few weeks. Um, twice a week, they hold an informal session. Um, and we're assured that eventually they'll they'll get to all the home rule petitions of which ours is one. There's probably a few hundred of them from the various towns in Massachusetts. And we understand that they often just uh pass them uh as as a as a bolus, as we say in G I. But Paul, do you have any insight on that yourself?
Uh, I have a whole bunch of alleged proposed home rule petitions I'm working on. Um. They have these, as you say, informal sessions. They will essentially pass all of them in due course. It's just a question of the committee on third read, putting them on the the agenda to be acted.
And how long does that generally take? It it'll be done before the the beginning of the next year's session, right?
Yes, 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 yeah. They'll take care of it. It'll get done. It's the informal sessions. Any one person can object and that knocks it out. So the difficult part is is it unanimous, basically? If it's unanimous, we're okay. If somebody gets up and objects, then it gets kicked out. That's the risk of waiting for the end of the regular session and to do it in this carryover session.
Yeah, so that's a little worrisome, isn't it? But anyway, thank you and Jeff and everybody who.
Got Linsky to support it. We.
Well, we hope, yeah.
He's not. He's he's gonna support it.
His his wording was that he's not gonna stand in the way.
Right, yeah, yeah. I talked to him in the middle of the session. He texted me from the middle of the session and I wanted it at ten PM or something like that.
Right. So I would rather heard something more enthusiastic from him, but anyway.
Yeah.
Paul, is it worth in the interim? Is it worth reaching out to Linsky to fill him in on the importance of this? He was, he seemed to be completely uninformed, actually.
Yeah, the the way this thing goes is that every almost every city of town has a home rule petition. And so nobody wants to object to any ones, because if you object to theirs, they'll object to yours. So normally everybody keeps quiet.
Okay.
So it's all unanimous. So I don't and there's some things from Natick that Linsky is working on, so he wouldn't want anybody to object to his stuff.
Okay, well, that's reassuring. So I think we're okay.
Did we go first? That'd be better if we went first, because if kind of if as far as goes second, he could object if this uh is already up there. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. Natick apparently, Catherine Coughlin tells me Natick has a uh a few home rule petitions and I don't know how many, maybe two or three, more than one. So, yeah.
Yeah, I've written one for them. Hopefully. But it's it's not gonna get passed this this under session. It's too big an issue.
It's gonna.
So I don't I I think it's gonna routinely pass. Just have to be patient.
Okay.
All right, sounds like that's that. Um, any other select board reports? The only thing I was gonna mention, I was gonna mention one thing, and we were talking more about the monument on the roundabout. Um, I got some more concerns about people hitting it and I kind of understand that. Um, I don't know if it's a pro. I don't think it needs a vote of the board, but they don't care if I ask like Sean or the contractor to put boulders around this thing. I know we talked about before, something like that. I mean, if I'm boulders around, maybe similar size, it seemed to be something that'd be, eh, might not look bad. I don't know if anyone has any thought.
I think that's probably good, Eric, because it strikes me that in its position on the top of that rise, uh, it it's very flat, you know, you don't see it. It doesn't rise up visually out of the road very much, so.
So it's actually why I like the money.
We could make four smaller obelisks all around it and then it'll be.
I think the boulders would detract for me, though. I think having it stand on its own would look better, but.
Yeah, maybe, but I like the idea of smaller obelisks. We could put, we could inscribe on them each, hit me instead, something like that.
I think that it's overrated. I don't think cars are gonna hear it.
Yeah, maybe not. When all the lines are drawn.
Well, if you look, you gotta get over two curbs to get to it. They have like those, they're not really curbs, but they have two curved granite pieces between the obelisk and the and the road.
So I thought that and with a simple just internet search, there are so many videos of cars jumping. Like I'm talking hitting these uh not knowing roundabouts of there and just, I mean, we're talking like Dukes of Hazzard stuff, like Evel Knievel. Just like they would actually land on the obelisk. I mean, they they get so much air. I think it can happen. I really do.
Don't underestimate the power of texting while driving.
Yes.
You know, somebody somebody who maybe doesn't drive it every day, you know, is vaguely familiar and doesn't realize that now there's a traffic circle and is just cruising down the road and texting and not thinking that that there's now suddenly a traffic circle where they didn't know there was one.
I actually don't think it's that likely in this case, but we can see what Sean and Lynch thinks. Lynch has probably installed, you know, hundreds of these uh traffic circles.
I mean, I'd like to do it before they leave sight, you know, right now we're at the road shut down, the contractor's there. If need be, we can remove them in the middle of the night at some point, but I would like that. I'd like a consideration.
So if I could make two comments, one is that Stephen's point. We should have a sign that says rotary ahead.
Yes.
It should be down there, the town driveway, town hall driveway, so that people can see a sign and anticipate for the for the person who's never done it before. It may be a surprise to suddenly come up upon this traffic circle. So having signs on on all four sides saying rotary ahead might be worth the investment. On all four sides saying rotary ahead might be worth the investment. The second point is that the the problem with putting boulders there is that trucks need to get by. So the boulders have to be pretty close to the to the obelisk.
The trucks do not have to mount that inside circle, just the outside circle they have to mount. With the pavement, we have the inside circle that is meant to be driven on, incidentally, as needed. And then there's the inside circles that's not meant to be driven on at all. Tall curb, tall vertical curb.
But if if the boulders are gonna be effective. They have to be. Like eight feet from this thing. They can't be six inches from this thing, because then they're not stopping anything.
They're not gonna be eight feet, they're not gonna be six inches. You can look at the the inside circle. I mean, they're not gonna move like four feet. I think. It'll certainly be better than, um. Not at all. It's certainly more, I don't know. You're saying it's gonna move six feet if a car hits it again with a boulder six feet?
No, I'm saying if a car is going, let's say sixty miles an hour. And goes up that curb. Into the inner circle. Do you think that boulder is gonna stop it or propel it up? So that it becomes a projectile and hits the top. For the. Further back, further away from from the obelisk. That's all I'm saying. So it's it's. I I I don't think it's a solution, but. I have no opposition to putting it in there.
Let me see boulders all the time. I I can't tell you what's gonna happen if it hits sixty miles an hour. I do believe it will not move the boulder enough. To actually then go impact the obelisk. I do know if the boulder's not there. And a car going sixty miles an hour will likely destroy the obelisk. And that's something I am more sure about, much more than if the boulder is there. That'll add some protection that didn't otherwise exist. Now, I will say the concern is not going eastbound. The concern is going westbound. When someone's leaving town, I've always been concerned that someone goes up around that hump there. That actually all of a sudden there's a roundabout there, cars backed up to it, which is why I like the obelisk, because it actually gives. Some visibility, you know, you're going westbound, you come up that hill, boom, you see a little point is, okay, sorry, that wasn't there before. So I like the obelisk there even just for that safety reason, just some people see it. And I do believe there might be some accident, some rear endings in the early part of this thing, and people going westbound on sixteen.
Here's Sean.
Yeah, Sean, we voted. We're gonna put boulders around the obelisk.
That's fine. It was illegal because it wasn't an agenda item. I don't even understand why you're talking about it, but. Jeannie told me to join.
It's just to protect it. I got some more concerns. People reached out with some more concerns about cars hitting the obelisk. Maybe there's some concern there. And it seemed like putting some boulders around it would be reasonable without taking detracting too much from the look of the obelisk. It's gonna provide some reasonable protection to it.
Yeah, no, we're not doing that. Boulders in the middle of a roundabout would be a projectile when a truck hits it and it would kill the person on the other side of the. Roundabout. Why would we do that?
Not if someone hits the obelisk. Actually stopped the car.
A boulder big enough to stop a car?
Sure, you see them all the time.
Then you won't be able to save the obel- obelisk.
I'm not a boulder fan myself.
Yeah, you wanna just build a ramp and we'll make it a Dukes of Hazzard?
If you really wanna protect it, you put these ballards in, like you see like an entrance to a. To a bike path, they put a bollard in there.
You can do ornamental ballards.
Yeah, I don't think we actually built a roundabout to protect an obelisk. Somebody wanted to put it in there, we're gonna put it in there. There's roundabouts all over the country. People sometimes drive through them. In case anyone hasn't driven up to it. Um, the Washington Street traffic doesn't line up with the obelisk. When you when you're heading west, you're probably gonna miss it. You're either gonna smash into the splitter island because you didn't turn at all, or you're gonna go to the right of it. There's too many ways to predict what might happen, but putting, I mean, I don't know how many rocks you think you'd have to put. But no, there's not a single engineer that suggested we do that. We either put the obelisk or you you tell us not to, but you voted to put it in. If it falls over, it falls over. It may or may not break. But I mean, we have trees all over town. We don't put a rock in front of the tree to keep anyone from hitting the tree.
That's not the same thing, though. I, you know, two hundred year old obelisk. I don't think it's the same comparison.
There were two hundred fifty year old trees though. One or two car strikes will kill the tree. I mean. If you wanna stop cars, you need to put ballards in there and that's gonna look hideous. Or we should have put three foot tall granite.
All right, is there anything else on the board?
I don't understand what the direction is. Are we putting the obelisk or not? Because we, I mean, you guys need to make it.
No, you're you're definitely putting the obelisk up.
All right, so no protections, bare obelisk up there.
All right, we can we can add it later, but it was, I mean, A, it wasn't an agenda item, B, we didn't ask the engineers on record. See, we don't have time to to do it.
No, let's figure that while shut down, the contractors still mobilized to some degree, at least there, at least while it's still shut down. I did talk to the chief today and they're gonna put some, um. Uh, details out there when they're actually on the stop signs and they go back up, being one by the roundabout. So people start getting used to the the motions, start getting used to the.
Maybe we should mention again while Sean's here. Sean, uh, it was suggested a little while ago, it's before you came on. That there be a caution rotary head signs all four ways approaching the rotary. Since people aren't used to it, especially at night, it might be good to have signs before you get to the rotary, just a heads up.
Yeah, we don't wanna warn anyone. That's that's a permanent sign before a rotary. That's in the design. And and we have the sign, we're gonna move the signboards, obviously. Right now, they say road closed. Everyone ignores them and just drives through. Uh, we're gonna move those to stop sign ahead where there hasn't been a stop sign. And couple the to the new intersection ahead. There's always a rotary head sign in front of a rotary.
Our our biggest risk is gonna be the split, because I've been blown by there without stopping anymore.
There will be some advanced signage there. There's gonna be a stop sign ahead sign, the stop sign itself. And one of the one of the signboards is gonna get moved to there.
I'd like to see Washington Street closed permanently. This is great going up Route twenty-seven.
Well. Woodland Street, so. We have some members who think differently, I promise you.
I'm just joking, so for the people.
Right.
Good job. I don't have any select board report.
All right, anything else? All right, so moved our second. All in favor, Steven?
Hi.
Marion? Paul? All right, that's around. I might as well.
Night, everybody.
Don't forget to sign, you guys, two things.
Have a great weekend, everybody.